Start at nine o'clock, January the 23rd, 2023, and we'll open up the court now. Today's going to be a little bit different. We're going to start something new. We will be having a preacher with us each week to lead us in our invocation. This week, we have Reverend J.C. Harrington here to do our invocation, and then we'll have the pledge to follow that. So if everybody rise, we'll bring him to the mic.
First, let me say good morning to each of you, and we would ask you to bow if you feel comfortable in bowing in respect to our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, and Almighty God. If it make you uncomfortable, you're just fine to stay as you are. Father God, as we come to you this morning, we come, Father, acknowledging you as God, confessing Jesus Christ as our Lord and Savior. Father, as I come to you on behalf of this Commissioners' Court, Judge Kupel, these Commissioners, County staff, and all that's in attendance, we ask for your continuous blessings. We ask for your divine wisdom among this court. We ask that this court be unified in their decision-making. Father, we pray your blessings on Titus County. Father, we pray your blessings on our nation. And Father, we pray and we ask this, Jesus Christ's precious name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Reverend.
Thank you, sir.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which is saying, "One nation, under God," in the Constitution, with every intention just to be answered.
Agenda number one, the public comments and requests for information on non-agenda items in accordance with Section 551.042 in the Texas Open Meetings Act. Have anyone that would like to speak or have comments? Okay. Next agenda item is consider and possibly approve the minutes from January the 9th, 2023, at the regular meeting of the Commissioners' Court.
Make that motion.
Got the motion by Commissioner Applewhite to approve that, second by Commissioner Parker. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Number three on the agenda, be consider and possibly approve the annual audit for the year-end, ending September the 30th, 2022, and we have Lanny Walker here to present that to us.
Thank you, y'all. Let me just quit. Thank you for getting me up so quick. Had to go back to work. I do thank y'all for letting us do this work. Guys, we've been doing it a long time. Every time I'm here working and/or in this room, I look back and see way back over here somewhere is where we started doing this audit. So we do appreciate your allowance to do it all these years. I'll just, if you've got a report with you, I'll point out some pages to you. Let me just first say that you have a clean opinion and unmodified report. Everything's fairly stated. The books and records are in excellent shape. Barbara and the ladies in the auditor's office and Cheryl in the treasurer's office have done a good job of accounting for the funds and doing good record-keeping, just as you would want. Y'all have done a good job budgeting through the years, and as we look at some of these numbers here, I think you'll see that we're in pretty good shape financially. If you turn over to page 15, is where I'm going to start inside the report, page 15. This is the balance sheet for the county's funds, for governmental funds of the county. And again, of course, this is September 30th to 22. If you'll notice, the general fund, we ended the year with a fund balance of about $10 million, which is very, very good financial position. It had an increase of 1.3 million in that fund this year. We'll look at why in just a moment, and we'll flip pages over in just a minute. The next fund there, major special revenue fund, that's the ARC fund, the funds that we received under a grant. Of course, we've received, each year, we, for the last few years, we've received about 3.5 or 3.1 or 3.2 million each year. And of course, we've shown that as unearned revenue or deferred revenue until it gets spent. It's not, it's not our money. We have to spend it, or it goes, it has to go back. So again, with 6.3 million there, and I know y'all have some plans to spend that money, and we'll begin doing that this year. The debt service fund, which is the fund where we set aside tax revenue to pay on our debts, and also where we reflect 8.4 million we get each year from Tech Dot to pay back those loop bonds. In there, 5.0, almost 5.3 million in fund balance, had a decrease of about $300,000 in there this year. The other funds, that's all the other special revenue funds, like the road and bridge funds and right-of-way funds, of course, was the biggest really. And inside those funds, we had a decrease of about 1.8 million this year, which, which is explained by the fact that we bought that much in right-of-way this year to be moved toward that road development out in Chapel Hill. So if you look, come over on page 18. Again, as I mentioned, the general fund had a nice increase this year, 1.3 million. Our revenues were up about $700,000 this year. Surprisingly, the sales tax revenue continues to go up each year. Sales taxes were up about $280,000. Property taxes were up about $477,000. Our bags went up, and then we also put a little bit more of the tax dollars into the general fund instead of the debt service fund this year. As far as variances in expenses, our expenses were up about $800,000. And really, there was about three or four things that made that up for the most part. Payroll costs were up about $300,000, which is nothing unusual there. Court-appointed attorney fees were up about $100,000. After post-COVID, and we've gotten, you know, gotten the courts going again, those costs were up. Also, fire protection costs were up $100,000. And then appraisal district fees were up about $67,000. We didn't get any refunds this time. That's compared to what we do sometimes.
Lanny, can I interrupt? On the fire protection, how much did you say that went up?
$100,000.
About $21,000 to $22,000.
Okay.
Yeah, not much.
Okay.
Yeah, this was, these are historical numbers here, so.
Sir, but.
As I mentioned already, the debt service fund went down about $300,000. Again, more of the tax revenue went to the general fund this time. And of course, you know, as you can see there, our requirements each year are about $10 million, and that goes through, I think we've got 12 more years, including this year, before that's paid off. And of course, we get 8.4 million each year from Tech Dot to pay on that, and then the rest is funded out of tax revenue. So most of that's covered. The other funds, the revenue in those funds went down about a million. And really, the reason for that is in the previous year, we had about $800,000 coronavirus funds that we received that we didn't have at this time. So, and again, as I mentioned, you'll notice that those funds are down by 1.8 million, and the right-of-way funds went down by 1.86 million. So that's the reason for that decrease. And if you, you know, want to look further, you can look further back in the report, and you'll see all the funds that make up these other funds, you know, including the road and bridge funds, and, you know, what each of those did this year. Just a couple more pages, and then I'll move on. If you would look over, actually there's one more page, I think. On page 22, we have a statement here on the proprietary funds, and these are funds that, like internal, the enterprise funds are funds that pay for themselves, basically. Those two, there's two funds that make that up, the sheriff commissary and the election fund. And then the internal service funds, it's the maintenance building fund that we've had for years, where we, we work on equipment and such, and, you know, get paid back for it. And then the insurance fund, an old self-funded health insurance fund. And I might just mention, in the internal, the enterprise funds, the sheriff commissary has a balance of about $85,000 in the fund balance in there, and then the election fund has about $170,000. And really, the election fund, that's kind of misleading really because of the fact that, you know, we had to transfer most of that funding over from the general fund to keep that going. So, and then the internal service funds, the maintenance building fund, we've got about $280,000 in there in fund balance, and the insurance fund about $430,000. And of course, we're not really self-funded anymore, so we've still got that money there available. As I said, everything is in good order, very good financial position, very good internal controls. I might say that also, of course, as part of this audit, we do audit the various fee-collecting offices of the county, such as the district clerk and the JPs and the county clerk, and we found all those to be in good order, probably as good as they've ever been. We didn't have any findings or any problems on any of them. They're all accounting for their funds, and the auditor's office is involved in that as well, and the treasurer's office, to make sure that those funds are being accounted for properly. So everything's in good order, very good financial position. So if you've got any questions, I'll try to answer.
Anybody got any questions for Lanny? Lanny, we appreciate that.
Thank you very much. Again, appreciate y'all letting me do this work.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Appreciate you, Barbara, and your hard work for that, too.
Thank you.
Number four, consider and possibly approve payment for movement relocation of the utilities in regards to the 1735 project. And David Ives is here, I believe. There he is.
Good morning. I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you guys. I'm going to try to make this as brief as possible, but I do want to answer any questions anybody has. Real quickly, I would like to kind of summarize. If y'all recall, right back 23 years ago, this court got entered into an agreement with Tech Dot to buy the right-of-way and clear it for the 1735 project out of Chapel Hill. Well, part of what that includes is clearing the utilities in the, in the right-of-way that were in the way. That's what I did, is work with utility companies. And for the past year and a half, two years, I've been working with the various utility companies to get their facilities out of the way of construction. And I'm proud to present it, to tell you today, that right now, you've got three different contractors out there working, clearing utilities. Within the next couple of weeks, I expect two more to be out there, and within the next month, I expect two more to be out there. And several of the ones that are out there now to have completed, we're actually getting there, and I think it's going to all work. What I'm here to talk to you about today is the reimbursable utilities. And unlike, I did want to clarify one thing. I'm not here to actually ask for any funding today. Okay, I will come back when we actually have bills. But what I have today is the agreements with the two utility companies that are reimbursable. And just for the record, to tell you, to explain why one is reimbursable and one is not, let's use People's Telephone, for example. People's Telephone is out there, and they're out there from one end of this project to the other. But all of their facilities are currently in Tech Dot's right-of-way. So they have to, by permit, move to the new Tech Dot right-of-way line. However, there are two utilities out there that are reimbursable. Tri-Sud Water, Special Utility at History, and Buie Cast Electric. And the reason they are reimbursable is because the majority of their facilities are outside of existing Tech Dot right-of-way. They're on private easements on places that were, are currently being purchased by Titus County for Tech Dot for the new right-of-way. We have to buy out their interest, their easements. And that's what, that's the reason they are reimbursable and the others are not. Now, what, the way we handled that, I have a, oh, probably 75, 80-page form here that starts with Tech Dot's form. It's, Tech Dot has a form that they use, that they've been using for years, and we just took that form and took out the state of Texas and put in Titus County in the various places where it says there's an agreement between these two. And real quickly, I, do y'all have a copy of the agreement? Okay, I can get a copy of this agreement to anybody that wants one. But real quickly, there was a few things I would like to point out to you. The first one is, we have to agree upon a compensable interest, going back to what I said a while ago about an easement versus being on Tech Dot's utilities. I've got, in this particular one, I've got about 40 pages of easements back here that they have on private property that we are, in essence, buying out. Once they have proven that to us, then we have to agree on a percentage of reimbursement. In this particular case, Buie Cast Electric is 91.89% reimbursable. And the reason they are not 100% reimbursable is because of all their poles out there, and I don't remember exactly how many they have out there, but of all their poles out there, two or three of them were actually in Tech Dot right-of-way. Okay, they were not on private property. So they have to pay for that percentage. The same thing goes with Tri-Sud Water. Tri-Sud Water, the thing about theirs was, they had several places where they crossed the roadway from one side to the other. Well, on this side, they were on private easement. On this side, they're on private easement, but they go through.
Wow.
I'm sorry. I don't think we need to do much.
We'll take that off your bill.
No.
Yeah, they got to record it.
Okay. Okay. Anyway, they were only about 85 or 86% reimbursable. But again, what we're talking about here today is we have estimates as to what their costs are. We won't know what their costs are until they get through with their work. The other thing, a couple of other things I wanted to tell you about that's in the agreement, they, they are not allowed to start their work until we tell them to, and by we, you tell them to. I've already had this discussion with the judge, and as soon as you sign this agreement this afternoon, I will send them a notice to proceed that says that they're fine to proceed. Y'all will get a copy of that, obviously. The other thing that they have to do before they're allowed to go to work is, all of this is subject to Buy America. And any of you that were not familiar with Buy America, how it applies to DOT projects, anything that is predominantly steel or ductile iron has to be made, manufactured, melted completely in the United States, and they have to have proof of that. Okay, it's my job to make sure that we have the adequate documentation that shows that this was the case. And you will get copies of all that as well, but that's what I, that's what y'all are paying me to do, is to make sure they follow all the rules. Finally, it says that they have to present a invoice in a form that we are comfortable with, and they have to do that no more than one year from the time their work is complete. I don't believe we're going to have a problem with the time, because these are two relatively small utility companies when you compare them to, say, Atmas and TXU, I mean Encore Electric and things. So I think these guys will get us a bill. But the more important part is, get us a bill that matches the form that we need it to be in. Because there are a number of things that are not compensable or reimbursable. Just as an example, they can't charge us for advertising and lobbying efforts. That's not considered a reimbursable agree, I mean, expense. Again, it's another one of those things that y'all are paying me to do, to make sure that we don't pay them for anything that we're not reimbursable. And it's my job to convince Ms. Schumer that this is all legitimate and matches and goes for this job. And I will become, come before this commission again, when I have a final bill for these two, and explain to you what that is and ask for payment. At this point, the only other thing that I was going to tell you real quick is, the two that we have that are compensable, Tri-Sud's amount, not their total amount of the cost, but the amount that y'all are on the hook for, is $614,688.73. Now, again, we all know how estimates work. Okay, that is an estimate. And I don't know at this point what they're going to come in at, but that's their estimate. And for Buie Cast Electric, it's $169,987.59. Now, again, that is the part that is reimbursable. That's not the total cost. Another thing that this says, this agreement says, is if there is a significant change in work or a significant change in expense, we, we have, they have to justify that to us, and we have a supplemental agreement. So in other words, they can't all of a sudden say, okay, well, there was $300,000 more worth of work out there that has to be done that we didn't know without coming before us, again, having an agreement and justifying to us what those expenses are. Again, it's one of those things I don't expect to happen, but at the same time, I wanted to make you aware of that. Now, I know you don't have a copy of this agreement for that. I apologize. I could have brought everybody a copy, but I think you'll find it's pretty boring stuff to begin with. But is there anything anybody has any questions of me about?
David, in your opinion, on you doing this quite some time, you said it could go over. Do they ever kind of overestimate these and come in under?
Well, I will tell you this. Utility companies tend to overestimate instead of underestimate because they don't want to come back and ask for more money. And it's not just necessarily come back and ask you or, in most cases, Tech Dot for more money. They don't want to go ask their people for more money. Okay, so it's typical that if the, if the estimates are off, it's going to be off to the high side. Now, the one thing that we've got right now that's a little bit of a unknown factor is how much supplies cost materials. Okay, the good thing is, all these guys put together this estimate and then immediately turned around and went to work. So the material costs that are in here should not change significantly. I don't anticipate that. Both of these companies are buying the materials themselves, and both of these companies basically have their materials already on hand. They may have to supplement with a few things here and there. For instance, Tri-Sud Water has to buy some steel pipe. Okay, because if you put it underneath the roadway, Tech Dot roadway, it has to be in steel pipe. It can't be in PVC. Okay, well, you know, that may be a little bit different than what their estimate was, but it looked like to me, from what I could tell, again, that their estimate was high. Another thing that we have going for us right now is a lot of our materials are coming down, and these estimates were put together when they were going up. Things have changed in the last few months. Okay, but to answer your question, Judge, I can't tell you that it's not going to come in higher, but I would be surprised if it come in any significant amount.
But you'll be watching those funds, of course.
I will be watching these funds. And again, I'm not an auditor, but I've been doing this a long time. And I'm, I will make sure that every invoice we have here matches up with an item over here that is a legitimate expense. Okay, then I will sit down with your auditor and make sure she agrees with me. Then we'll come to you.
Perfect.
Any other questions? I, just one more thing for the record. I don't know if y'all were aware of this, but Tech Dot's roadway contract has already gone to length. The contract has already been awarded. So right now, they are waiting for these utilities to get out of the way. And it's just, again, for the record, it's not our fault that the utilities are late. There was a number of bureaucratic things that happened along the way that created this delay. But the point is, by this summer, I think you'll find that they're going to be out there actually working on the roadway. Are there any other questions? I will leave it to you.
Any discussion on this?
I don't have anything. Judge, I will say that I talked to Gary Lubo last week, and he assured me that everything was.
This is all in your precinct out there. So did he talk with you any about having to shut the road down there when they, the big dip, there's a big dip going out that way, said something about they may have to shut the road down. Both, Tech Dot was telling me that.
He didn't say anything about it. I know when they first started talking about it, they said something that they were going to build a bridge and all through there.
They're going to have to build that road.
And bring that load up. So they wasn't for sure at the time that, then, as to what they were going to do.
Spoke with Tech Dot last week. Now, just kind of giving you a heads up on that with your precinct out there, that at some point, they'll have to shut it, they'll have, they'll have access to getting in, but it will, their road will be shut down there to build it, where it goes down into that bottom and comes up.
I helped talk to, well, I hadn't talked to the new superintendent out at Chapel Hill now, that's out there now. But he, I did tell him at some point that that may be shut down, and they may have to.
Reroute.
Come in off of 2348 and down 4,000 to get into the school.
Just want to make sure that was, you was aware of that as well.
I make a motion if we approve the payment to move or relocate utilities.
Commissioner Parker makes a motion to approve this and to pay the utilities?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Parchman. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Moving on to number five here, acknowledgement of racial profiling reports from the sheriff's office and constable's office. Chris, are you going to speak on that?
Yes, sir. Each year, law and health agencies are required to submit a racial profiling report to the state of Texas. Also, part of that is, we have to provide a copy to the Commissioners' Court that oversees us at the sheriff's office. Everyone, excuse me, everyone's been provided a copy of that. There weren't any complaints filed, either locally with the state or with the federal agencies against Texas County Sheriff's Office this year. Everything was good on all our racial profiling reports. So that's already been submitted to the state. All we need to do is just acknowledge that y'all have received the report from us to be read in the minutes as part of our requirements for our reporting to the state.
Thank you, Chris. Anybody got any questions for Chris? It's a pretty long report here. I went through some of it, but you've got to be an attorney to look at some of that.
Yeah, exactly. The reason that reports usually only about eight or nine pages, but this year it's going to be close to 40.
Right.
It's a new requirement that they've asked us to put into, basically, the makeup of the city as far as everything from housing to the makeup of the city on race and gender. It's, like I say, that's the reason why it looks much, looks like a huge report this year compared to the previous years is the reason why I'm at.
We appreciate y'all. Appreciate y'all's service, all y'all's officers as well.
I make a motion to make accrue the report.
Got a motion by Commissioner Parchman to approve the profiling reports.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Jody Mitchell, Commissioner. All those in favor?
I think it's just an acknowledgement.
I think we have to approve it. We have, we have received it. So their report is just going to them. So yes, it is to receive the report. All those in favor?
Aye.
Number six, consider and possibly approve accepting grant monies from the local assistance and the tribal consistency fund. And I believe Barbara's going to speak with us. This is more, more of the COVID money. Is that correct, Barbara?
It's some more funds related to the American Rescue Plan.
Rescue Plan.
Yes. So, Mark Taylor let me know about this. Mark Taylor and the trailer and associates, Local Assistance and Tribal Consistency Fund. I'm reading just one sentence. I don't like to leave you casually, but it's a general revenue enhancement program that provides additional assistance to eligible revenue-sharing counties and eligible tribal governments, which is basically the same thing as the American Rescue Plan was. It gives us $50,000 this year and $50,000 next year. There are some requirements. The first requirement is that we have to request these funds by January 31st, which is, you know, next week. Judge Cooper, his arraignment began that process because they have some things in place related to his personal information, including facial identity. If we don't do that, if you decide not to do that, or if we miss that deadline, then we will not be eligible for either year. As far as the use of funds, they may be used for any governmental purpose other than lobbying, similar to the American Rescue Plan funds, and any program, service, or capital expenditures that are traditionally undertaken by government will meet those requirements. that are traditionally undertaken by government will meet those requirements. Funds are labeled to recipients until it's expended. It doesn't count a deadline. I do want to caution you, that's just because they haven't had time to give us a deadline. There will be a deadline. And also, it says, or return to the treasury. So while the eligibility seems very wide, I anticipate they will be giving us more requirements. And if we don't meet those, then we could in the future have to return those to, to the treasury. So the request today is just to authorize Judge Cooper to continue with that process to accept those funds. Any further questions?
As Barbara was saying on this, we've done some investigating on it. It's a whole lot like the rescue money that we have received. Anytime you get money from them, there's going to be some ties to that with the government wanting you to do certain things. But I believe this is $100,000 that we do need to get. If we don't accept it, somebody else is going to accept it and I feel like we can use that in our county pretty well. So that's why I started the process, getting the face identification and the paperwork because there is a deadline of the 30, I think it's 31st. Is that right, Barbara? To apply for it. So that's, that's why I got it on the agenda and I can answer a few questions about it. Don't have a whole lot of answers.
Is there any stipulation on what it has to be used for or anything?
Any governmental purpose. We'll have to do the same thing like we're doing with the American Rescue Plan where y'all designate what you want to use it for. And if we're purchasing something, we'll have to follow all those purchasing rules. But other than that, it's basically the same thing. We will have that in a separate fund though because we will have to report it separately.
I'll make a motion we approve the judge's move forward with it.
Got a motion by Commissioner Parker to approve this.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Applewatt. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Moving on to number seven, consider, considering possibly approve funding for onsite setup and training for courthouse security contact list through Security Tech Systems Incorporated. We had a false alarm last week or maybe two weeks, two weeks ago, one? Last week. Regardless, some of the messages that went out, went out to people that's not even in office anymore, not even working for the county anymore, some different things. So we talked to, to the company there. The security contact list is, is need to be updated for those that are, will be carrying their firearms with them. There's also a notice that goes out to them. There's an email and also a text message. So if one of the alarms goes off here or anywhere in the county that we've got an alarm, there is a part that does need to be put on there. Anyway, $975 for a part and then they will also, while they're here replacing that part, some of, it's, it's an outdated part that we need. But then they will go back over those email list and phone numbers so that those numbers will be to people working for us. Some of the, Woody and them across the street are notified and it's also notified they're getting a screen over there so they'll be able to see in the courthouse. Other than them seeing in the courthouse, there won't be anybody else seeing into the courthouse under the new system, just, just Woody and Ken across the street for our security. The JP's and them got security. The sheriff's department will also be included on that feed. But I really think we need to move ahead with this and, and get that updated and, and the list updated for, for any calls.
Is this 975 parts and labor or just?
That's, that's parts, labor and, and setting up the, and, and setting up the training for, he will go over that list with Monica so that she can go in and verify that. And if there's any changes, needs to be that. Somebody quits working for the county or something, needs to be taken off that list or that alert, then she can do that from our system.
I'll make a motion to pass this.
Commissioner Mitchell with a motion to pass the, the training and the setup of this.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Parchman. All those in favor? Those opposed? Okay. On to number eight, considering possibly approve raising the rate for voluntary fire runs. And I believe Marcus is here. Long as you don't walk off with it.
Good morning, commissioners. We talked about this briefly, I think, back in November, December. I don't remember exactly when. And we thought we had this done, but evidently we did not get this part approved when we approved some other things. What we're talking about today is the run money that the county reimburses volunteers to help with our fuel and other expenses we have when we make fire calls. We don't actually get paid for calls. We get run reimbursement money. Currently, a junior firefighter, which there's very few of right now, gets $6 and that's to help them get their training and stuff like that. A basic firefighter makes $8 a run. If he's out there two hours, four hours, six hours, whatever it is, he currently gets Wildland and engine support, that means they can fight a grass fire, they can pump the truck. They currently get $9. A support firefighter, that means they can do everything at a house fire except for going into the structure. They can help outside with hoses, fans, whatever it is, as long as they're outside in a safe location. They get $10. Firefighter one, which can do everything, including some of the interior mop up and stuff, is $11. Firefighter two, which can do everything inside the house and all, is $12. So right now, the currently the highest paid firefighter the county pays a month is $12 per call. Like I said, they could be out there two, three, four hours, depends on large grass fires. Of course, none of us do it for the money. We're there for other reasons. We would like to see them raising these funds. Talked to Barbara. The county sets aside $5,000 a year for every department. And we've been coming in, some of us 2,500, some of us around, I think the top one was 3,400 last year. Barbara, maybe even more. We're looking at, what we'd like to see is junior firefighter would stay the same. A basic firefighter would go from eight to 12. A wildland and engine module would go from nine to 14. Support unit would go from 10 to 15. Firefighter one would go from 11 to 20. And a firefighter two would go from 12 to 25. We would also like to add in there to see if we could get some more. That might help with our volunteers and then getting people out to training. We would like to add $25 a month for any member that comes to a training session.
Marcus, my understanding on this, with the $5,000 if, which we've already got budgeted. So if, if you do go over that, each fire, each fire department will pay that out of, out of their funds. Is that, is that correct?
That's what we discussed and that's what we said. I was told by Commissioner the other day, if we see that, to go over to come back and ask and he would, he would be glad to entertain the thought of giving us three, four, 500 more dollars to make the year out. But our purpose right now is to get it to the 5,000. If it's, we go over 5,000, originally, we said we would not come back and ask the county for money.
Right, that's right.
Next year during budget time, if we see we're getting to 5,000, then we would come back at that time and say, can we raise this to 6,000?
But as, but far as the 2023 budget, there wouldn't be no, that, that would not come out of, out of the taxpayers.
That's correct.
That would just come out of y'all's, y'all's funds there.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Well, like I said, I talked to them. If they're doing the, you know, they're helping us a whole lot and it, you know, I just see that if they are doing a good job, they, most of them are going to get more runs and I just hate to see them have to go out there for not, you know, for nothing, you know? But, you know, I told them that, you know, they would be, if we had to, we'd be, would help, that we'd come together and we, you know, I couldn't see why any difference we couldn't help them because, you know, they help a whole lot and they keep a, they help us a whole lot in the county.
Right. I totally agree with that. I just was making sure that everybody understood that there wouldn't, wouldn't be any out of the budget this year unless we agreed to that and they had, they had agreed to do that, to step up, to step up their part. And if we do get over them, we've got all these different ones that we might could, might could switch some money with, so.
Ready for questions, please?
Sure.
So can we pay $5 per month for T D, please? Can I get a run rate?
Yes, it would just stay in the $5. Yes, on the training sheet, we'll have a set, we'll add an extra place on the, on the run sheet that we turn in, it will show training.
Commissioners, just for your information, the highest one that we had last year was TriLakes and that we paid $3,924 to them. The lowest one that we had was Sugar Hill, we paid $508 to them last year. And then my next question is with regard to Talco, but we also want to increase these rates to the city of Talco. When we increased the, the monthly support fees, we did that for the city of Talco as well. We don't need times to fill up Talco's, is interested to go to Talco as well?
I know Talco's on a different run rate than we are. I have no idea what their run rates are. I believe they're lower than what the county is, but I don't know that.
They're currently getting the 5,000?
No. We didn't, we had to give, theirs has been $7,000 for a number of years and then last year we increased it to 7,500 and this year we increased it to 8,500 because their runs, they have a lot of runs. Last year we paid $7,760 to them.
Evidently, their, their run money may be more like, like Marcus is saying. I would say just do it for the volunteers and then if Talco wants to come back, we can talk with them because they're already, they're already exceeding the 5,000 rate.
Do they, they go to, they go to county, Franklin County, they go to Red River County and?
Right.
So, you know, like I said, you know, I'll talk to Randy and get if he wants to come up, I'll just tell him to come to court and discuss.
And a lot of the difference in, if you look at the numbers, TriLakes and Talco, it's going to be their real man's cost. They run a lot of medical calls that the rest of us currently don't run, although Argo runs a few, but not, you know, TriLakes and Talco, they're way out there, so it takes a long time.
Time to get there.
They are set up to run medical calls more than the rest of us.
Barbara, without adding that up, but that's, that's going to be close to doubling those rates is, is that at the end of the day? So there's not maybe but one, one of those counties that would go over? If, if it doubled, what you're saying, TriLakes was 30?
I think Norrix would go over too.
Okay, so two of them.
Of course, if it gets our county rates, we'd run that out.
Exactly.
Well, that's just who they have to run right. You add in this $25 per month, I think it would go over. If this will get, you know.
But y'all, y'all are good with that, Marcus?
Yes. I asked Barbara, say, Norrix goes over and Sugar Hill's still way under, can we take Sugar Hill money and move it to Norrix?
If you support, you can do that.
Okay.
When I don't, you can't do that.
Well, it just gives us another option so that we don't go over the money that's allotted for the volunteer fire departments. If we can move one to the other and not have to come back, you know, really ask for more money because that money is already set aside for one department. We can maybe just move it over.
But whatever they don't use, it just goes to next year, right? They don't get to keep, they don't get to keep that, right?
Yeah, like you, your role, your role is done now.
So it's, yeah, so it's just, if they go, if they go under, that's, they don't, they turn it all into next year and so that's just moving money to one and the other.
But if you put them over here, we can't pay them, so that will have to go back to program approval. And that's why I'm asking you about $25 per month for a change in training because we can consider that several days are going to go over because, you know, if you go to train, you know, one training every other.
Right.
You know, you could, you could consider that. That is going to cost several of you to go over. And I think it's a good.
I see, I see that, that can, could make us go over, but I really, I really want to give them some type of incentive for, for that and hopefully that will suffice Chief McGray as well and helping those and our volunteers. We don't want to penalize our volunteers. I mean, at, at $20, you're out there two hours and your gas is more than that going out there and we do appreciate all y'all do for us. And I, I have no problem with, with the $25 a month unless see, let's see if that does get us some more training. And I have no problem with, with making a motion to do all of those plus the $25 a month for the, for the training.
I'll make that motion.
Again, we'd like to thank y'all for all y'all do for the volunteer fire departments. We're pretty fortunate in Titus County. There's a lot of counties that does not have, or a lot of volunteer departments in other counties that I don't believe have the support that we do here in Titus County.
Got a motion, motion made by Commissioner Applewatt.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Parker. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? On to item number nine, approve oral and written reports from county officials.
Make a motion we approve those reports.
Motion made by Commissioner Parchman to approve those.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Mitchell. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Number 10, considering possibly approve the treasurer's report.
Make a motion we approve it.
Commissioner Parker makes a motion to approve that.
Second it.
Seconded by Commissioner Mitchell. All those in favor?
Aye.
Abstain.
Number 11, approve the budget amendments. Barbara's got those. You weren't, you might get that microphone back, so.
We have only one budget amendment today. It's related to the American Rescue Fund and the purchase of the bucket truck that was created for on January the 9th. Those funds are set up in a single line item within Fund 035 that's entitled Other Compliant Costs. So this request is to move $45,000 from Other Compliant Costs to Capital Outlay to give us a line item to code that bucket truck.
So that budget amendment is for that bucket truck?
Yes, sir.
That all commissioners will share equally or when they need it?
Yes, sir. And in March, we will have a countywide budget review and I'll bring a long list of budget amendments at that time if, if there's any that need, or usually are needed.
But he will be here the 7th of February, right? Mark Taylor?
Mark, Mark Taylor is scheduled to come February 7th at 10:00. Is that right? Yeah.
But that's already, the bucket truck's already approved through law, so that's no problem.
It's already given, all the documentation, I can have it. I do want to mention to you one thing that Mr. Iverson said. That Buy American program is one of the strings that comes with this American Rescue Plan in federal program and it is stringent and it is very important. Y'all recall what he said about steel, you know, from, I mean, basically, I was making them dig it out of the ground every single step along the way so there's a mountain of paperwork. So, but we've gotten what we need from Mark Taylor this time.
Make the, make the motion to approve that budget amendment.
I'll make a motion.
Jody Mitchell makes a motion to approve the budget amendment.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Applewatt. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Number 12, sign the pay orders and approve the payments.
Make a motion we pay our bills.
Commissioner Parker makes a motion to pay, pay the bills.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Parchman. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Moving it up for the commissioners to have any closing remarks.
I don't have anything.
Dana?
No, I don't.
Jody?
None here.
Once again, I thank you. It was a little different. Want to thank Reverend Harrington for coming today and leading us in our prayer. I think we're a whole lot better together and we appreciate you stepping up and being the, being the first one here to do that for us and look forward to working with the rest of our preachers around, around Titus County. Would like to give Barbara and her staff a pat on the back for their job well done. Lanny said this is the best our books have been and in great shape and that, that does, it goes unspoken, but we appreciate you. It makes our job a lot easier when, when they walk in, tell us everything's in great shape and we, we appreciate you and the girls downstairs doing that. So with that being said, I appreciate everybody coming. If I could entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn. I make a motion to adjourn.
Commissioner Mitchell makes a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Parker. All those in favor?
Aye.